Are we using the phone? I want to know, those are questions you have to ask.
They all have a printout of their first name.
That seems good, how are you?
Good. Yeah man, amen. Okay, I have to move in some quickly. Who bike is that? I gotta pull up back.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. As we do in all things, we recognize God Almighty. Please welcome Bishop Arnold Kunde Jr. to lead us in prayer.
Let's all stand. Our ears close eyes and reverence the God. Precious heavenly Father, we come this evening to give you thanks, praise, honor, and glory. First of all, we want to recognize you as Lord and Savior. Lord, you allow us to come together for such a time as this. Father, some of us do not know exactly what to do. But God, our eyes are on you and our ears open to your cry. And I pray, Father, your brows wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, that at the close of this night, that you would give honor and glory and that we will all understand it's all about you. Father, we thank you for the best place in the Bahamas, East End, Grand Bahama. And Father, right now, we pray, God, that everything, it will be a productive meeting. It will be a meeting of peace, love, and joy. God, we thank you for these leaders and the one who is about to express what's going on up here. We give you thanks, praise, honor. We ask these favors and every blessing. And Jesus, did anybody say?
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, this marks the first in a series of town hall meetings to be hosted by Oban Energies. Oban Energies, a company that is committed to the development here in East Grand Bahama. While most of the heralded news of Oban's proposed project has been based in New Providence, the leadership of Oban has taken upon themselves to focus on Grand Bahama primarily ambition. They have traveled throughout the eastern settlements. Last evening, Oban met with members of the local government of East Grand Bahama District. Today, they met with members of the Grand Bahama Christian Council and the Grand Bahama Chamber of Commerce executives. They thought that this first town meeting, as I said, marking the first in a series of meetings, will be held primarily in the East Grand Bahama settlements. It's my pleasure now to introduce the president of Oban Energies, Mr. Satval Duna.
Thank you very much. So this is what they mean by the warm, behaming welcome. For most of you that know me, know me as the Phantom or the Mystery Man. My name is Satval Duna. I'm the president of Oban Energies. I've been involved with the company for over two years since its inception and its current form. And during that time, I think there's been a number of questions in the media. And what I want to do today is I want to talk about sort of our policy as a company and talk about how we set out two years ago to build a long-term sustainable project that was done in an environmentally friendly way and that offered long-term economical benefits, not just to the wider Bahamian community, but in particular to the East End of Grand Bahama. Other than this, I'm sure you've all got a lot of concerns and questions. So I want to have ample time for you to ask your questions today. So I can answer them specifically and give you the information that perhaps a lot of you are looking for and answer a lot of questions that you've accumulated over the last four or five weeks. So with history of the company, so this organization started two years ago in its current format with a number of shareholders predominantly from America. I myself am a shareholder in the company. I was first involved in the company in 2013 when I was working for an investment company that used to invest in infrastructure projects. We looked at an organization at the time called Mid-Atlantic and we made an offer of investments, we offered a term sheet. They had a number of conditions attached to involving the government and the company. For whatever reason, those conditions weren't met. My organization, of which I was a family member, continued. We sold that organization on and I became a private investor and consultant. And I saw an opportunity with a north storage and refinery terminal and reached back out to the prominent, the main shareholder in Mid-Atlantic at the time, which was the Cape Family Trust. We then started Oban Energies up. Since that time, we've invested approximately $10 million in preliminary research. That includes finding the appropriate site that offers the most environmentally friendly advantage, doing preliminary engineering, doing other groundwork and market research, as well as appeasing the government requirements. That investment has already had a direct benefit to the people of Grand Bahama and the wider Bahamian community. So by way of example, we currently have five engineers across multiple disciplines that includes civil, structural, environmental, coastal, geotechnical. Of those five, four are Bahamian companies. From our legal advice, we've got two legal councils. One is in New York and the other one is based in Nassau, in the Bahamas. A company called Cotis Law. So 50% of our legal services are provided by a Bahamian company. From a PR communications and marketing point of view, we have four organizations. And I'm pleased to say 100% of those are Bahamian companies. And this policy that we have is also reflected in the heads of agreement we put together with the government. Of the 600 construction jobs that we're looking to offer, 80% will be reserved with Bahamian. I'd like to make a commitment to, after first wire refusal of those jobs, the people of the East End. Post-construction. Post-construction, we had 250 jobs. Again, the same commitment will apply. First wire refusal, the people of the East End, 80% reserved with Bahamians. In addition to these commitments, we've agreed to other policies that money made companies or international investors won't necessarily do. This includes housing. Most construction projects include mobile housing. We've committed to develop housing that is long-term and sustainable and available post the construction period. This will provide residential homes for 200 people. Those are exclusively reserved under contractual terms in the HLA which is publicly available for Bahamians. No non-Bahamian person can acquire that property. To support that new housing development, we've agreed to community projects. In our role as a community provider, we're providing a sponsorship that is financial capital. But this is not our community. At the end of the day, we weren't born and raised here on Europe. So we've decided to put in place an investment or community committee made up of local people, decide at their discretion how to invest that money. That could be schooling, it could be education, it could be sports. How would you determine is best for your people, your able to decide it. As part of our operations, we've implemented or we will be implementing training programs. This includes vocational training, so technical training for people that want to upskill themselves in technical efficiencies, be it engineering, shipping, marine. We've offered, we are going to be offering management training programs. And this is really designed to bring back people that have already got the technical efficiencies and skills. Engineers that have left, that want to come home, stay home, but also want to know that by doing so, they're part of an organization that offers the opportunity to become executive managers in the future. In addition to that, we're going to be implementing on the job training and in particular, personal development plans. These are plans that enable an individual to identify their goals and aspirations and force to work for them and design specific programs for them to achieve success within the company. Now, most organizations can start these programs after construction. But we recognize we want to try to engage people from the outset in jobs. So we propose to implement the training programs pre the construction period. So the moment we start earthworks on the site, we want to recognize which people are available in the community, what training and development they would need to enable them to be part of the construction process. And during that construction process, what training and development they will need to be entitled to or be able to take full-time employment post-construction. And this ethos has gone on to lead on to our environmental impact. So I mentioned earlier, we've made a big investment to benefit the community. The reason we've spent so much, however, is we looked at a number of sites in the East End of Grand Bahama, Grand Bahama in general. Of the many sites we looked at, we identified three that were perhaps viable. We sent our engineering team and environmental team to each one of the three sites. And we've determined the site we have because it offers the most environmentally friendly way to preserve the natural environment. And just by way of example, we had one site that had the existing infrastructure in it. It had utilities, it had roads, but it was too close to residential. So the site we've identified is approximately one and a half miles east of the Statoz site. That's quite important because the Statoz site, not only does it already have the environmental effects that we perhaps experienced, but fundamentally allows us to assess the mistakes that we made in the environment and learn from those in our engineering and design concepts. The site is not local to any national trust parks. It's not local to any residential sites. Fundamentally, it comes in two parcels. The first parcel is the land. It's a narrow piece of land that stretches from the beachfront to the main road and then approximately one mile north. That land's private development, private land that we've acquired. And it is reserved just at the pipeline corridor to the ship docks. There where the ships come in and part their boats to offload the oil. That's quite important because it means we can actually realistically put the pipes underground. So we don't need to disturb the beachfront property or the natural visual things that you benefit from every day. And we're very good physical environmental impact for the people that live here. So we don't want them to walk down the beach and come across a lot of pipes or potential oil spills. So we are located that purposefully. The site then moves on, as I say, a mile, approximately one mile north of the road into a larger square piece of land that is in the distance. There are wetlands in that area. We've moved the site further to preserve the wetlands and to make maximum use of the available piece of parcel we've given. So again, the entire thinking was to ensure visually it would affect the environment, that we could construct this project so that it was underground and protect the visual effects. We've moved it to the backside of the road, away from residential, away from the seafront, so any potential visual effects are dealt with. From an engineering point of view, we're using the best in-house technology, engineering design concepts to ensure that vapor, smells, oil spills, and any other environmental impact are kept to a minimum. I'm very empathetic towards the fact that many of you perhaps have experienced one or two types of existing terminals and have a certain resonator with that terminal's effective smells and odors and other environmental concerns. So this is going to be one of many meetings that we have. And as we get closer to finalizing our environmental consultation process with the government, finalizing our designs, prior to making submissions, we're doing another consultation meeting to show you the designs we have, the technologies that we have, and how they mitigate those odors, mitigate the environmental impacts. We'd like obviously your input into those things. So with that said, I think it's probably best, given the crowd, we open up the floor to some questions.
You want to ask all persons who want to make comments, address concerns, to come to the center of the room, to the microphone. We will only take questions and comments from the microphone at the center of the floor. Because of the crowd, we'd like to permit one question and no comment per person.
If you want to, you can write it down and address the questions later.
We can do that, we can do that. One question and no comment per person, please.
So I should do my own down hall meeting? To make sure of mine? Because mine is short and simple. Sorry, sorry, sorry. If you say two minutes or three minutes a person?
You see, if we have time, if we have time and someone has been to the microphone before, they can come back. But we want to give everybody an opportunity.
Yeah, how you see this is sixty seconds?
We want to get everybody to ask a question, please.
I mean, isn't this... And you say you come to visit the community? Oh boy, I'd really like to sit. But you know, Facebook and all of them, I must recall it. I even ain't gonna make a question, I can make a statement since I can't ask the similar questions anymore. I'm confused about you resigning, but yet here, representing the company. And the Prime Minister himself said so. I am totally against this, based on how I start. I have asked, I wrote written, the Attorney General of the United States, Florida, the Security Exchange Commission, and London, I regretted my meaning. I'm speaking to some of the senators and congressmen in the US, senators and congressmen in Florida, to let them know that they need to have their eyes on this, because this is going to affect them. Obviously, since I can't ask a question, you will probably hear from me on the other side. I'll ask a question to the general public and you can decide how you want to answer it. You can get the marketing guys there and everything else. You can sell me something I don't want to buy, unless you can tell me how it's going to benefit me. But since I can't answer the, ask the question to find out, you know, we'll deal with it that way. And I believe... You being a whole lot, old down hall meeting? You want more time? Can you be a couple, be a couple, you'll come back? But mine, my word, we have one next week or whatever, too. We have the same equivalent as you.
Pitchey, back to the mic.
This one, you were clean, you resigned from the company. How are you now here representing it?
He signed a contract with the Bahamas, man.
Answer his question.
I live in the Bahamas. Every day. Because I don't come to your house?
Could we please just answer the question and then I'll ask mine?
Thank you for the question. So there was no official resignation, that's incorrect. There was no resignation letter from me. The situation is, as a corporate entity, as we move onto a critical stage, we need to appoint more managers. Managers with depths of experience in the energy sector, for example. So the intent of the company was always from the outset under the previous government to move the management of Oban Energies to Oban Management LLC. That organization was incorporated approximately 12 months ago. And the idea was that organization would then govern the operations of Oban Energies, of which I am appointed still officially as the president of that company. I have the documents, they have gone to the Attorney General. They have been, they will be made available according to their discretion. But there is no resignation on the president of Oban Energies and management of Oban Energies. From a US law perspective, is moved to Oban Management, made up of a series of individuals with experience in various sectors, but in particular, energy. There is no resignation.
Okay, Andrea Thompson, welcome all fellow Bahamians. Been here for 45 years, fairly, and I am totally upset over what's happening. And I think a lot of people are being spoon-fed stuff they really don't understand. Question, you say you're green. Right here, if you go, all of us are intelligent people. We can go online and look at things. Pull up oil refineries and health problems. Proven cancer, proven asthma, proven water table, proven our environment, proven children that are born with untouchable defects. So don't tell me that there's not going to be smog that's going to be going across our island. That is nonsense. We are going to have it. And as far as what was mentioned to the gentleman in front of me, I have the court case from the state of Florida where Mr. Krueger was indicted for taking money. I have the papers from Florida showing that you have been removed as a manager. And you have your address, the same as Mr. Krueger's, and the new management company. So it's a bunch of malarkey, you're tricking all these people. So it's a bunch of malarkey, you're tricking all these people.
Did you all just ask the question?
There's no question, you all, for things.
Eddie, my pastor here is a resident of East End Grand Bahama. Very much concerned about the project. But I'm, it started now, the Prime Minister mentioned that somebody resigned and no longer part of the company, it's us, you. I'm answering, because I believe the Prime Minister said that somebody resigned and not part of the company, and you are representing this group.
I'm not representing Mr. Krueger.
You represent the Oland Energy.
I'm not representing the Oland Energy.
Well, as a resident of East End Grand Bahama, and a part of, once employed at the former site, I had the opportunity to sit with your all at your meeting in Freeport and look at the project and the concern. And it painted the picture. I told him in a meeting about the conservation part of it, ocean bed part of it. Because I was a fisherman, my father and I fished that area just for every two or three weeks, the only basic fishermen in Hyrum. And that would be a part of my concern because I will not be able to get my crawfish as the older, the older one's striking. But the concern, we're looking at jobs, we need jobs, we need the project, East Grand Bahama. And in particular, I am concerned, I said in the meeting, you mentioned that there are some twelve vendors that you already had working with you. My concern was, if the project's coming to East End Grand Bahama, and not one soul was allowed to even walk, bush, cut the grass while, chub while they were doing the project, we now have a bottom end of the barrel, and now you're coming to say we're supporting. Here's a big meeting, we're coming to support it. And not a soul, I don't know, I'm a good boss, in East End is a part of the project. What is happening? You come to East End, we're against bottom end of the stick. Jobs are available, the bad energy, the twelve companies already made their money. And we haven't made a dime in East End Grand Bahama. When will it happen first? When will it happen in East End Grand Bahama? The problem is, when will it happen in East End Grand Bahama? Who knows what is what? What? Just only the, should I use the word, who is sitting around the table with you all, who are making the money. Now, tonight, there's a big meeting tonight. Was it organized by East End Grand Bahama, or was it organized by some other entity? We have local government who represent us, the administrator represents Grand Bahama. Some people, I mean, we just, we're not, our positive people. Treat us like normal men too. If there's a meeting, give us ample time to know. There was a meeting in East Grand Bahama for the people of East Grand Bahama. Everybody come and make their concern, we need to make our own decision. And I said, our local government, we need to make our own decision, East Grand Bahama, do we want it, yes or no? Nobody else will come in and tell us, do we want it, we don't want it? Let's come together and say, right now, we all understand because there was just only a meeting, perhaps to say, would we want, do we want it? And so we say, you, we may support it, but we need to need more information, more time. So we, so we said to the people in East Grand Bahama, Hyrum, Queenstown, we have to say first. And I think our people, there's a speaker, election exactly, either we're going to accept it or reject it, or we will know exactly tomorrow, at the administrator office, I want everybody in there looking for a job, applying for a job. Where do we go? That's where we want to go. Two of the charges, East Grand Bahama, that we can go up to tomorrow and say, here's a hundred people ready to work. Do we have that in hand? Do you have that in hand? Do the administrator have that in hand? Do the local government have that in hand? We just up in there, we know up in there, being taken. Tomorrow, or when you leave from here, you want to know exactly whether the past person group go and get a hundred people to work for me. And I need to know what is what, they're still relayed to know, we don't want to happen the S A. We want positive things. When you leave from here, you saw a committee, set a committee, who will by next week, will have to you, person that you want to see hired, effectively, that they're part of the project if we accept it. If the people in East End Grand Bahama accept it, not NASA or anybody, it's coming to East End, we will be effective. We will be, and so we need to first line information on what will happen for East End Grand Bahama. I don't want nobody else, but he had part of it, it's East End Grand Bahama. We want to know, where is the office? If you come in, East Grand Bahama will play as part. Not tomorrow, but now, now, now.
Can I come in a lot?
Yeah, just come in.
Good night. I am one of the quasi-residents of East End Grand Bahama. I don't permanently live here, but I own property on the beach, not too far from the location. And I have done some studies on refinery, and there are seven, I found out that there are seven hundred oil refineries throughout the world. And seventeen in Canada, and then I've looked at Lepito. And I found out that they are ecologically operating sound and the environmental impact is to no substantively negative. And so I think the idea in principle is a humongous economic growth for the East End Grand Bahama, providing. And for Grand Bahama and the Bahamas as a whole. Like I said, there are seven hundred oil refineries worldwide, Google it, anybody can, and seventeen in Canada. And the economic benefits from those refineries are humongous to the people that live and that works there. And so the East End people must be sensitized to the benefits and to the opportunities that will come with your development. Because without it, it would be actually setting a goal mind in the midst of a people who are only looking on. So the people must be told as to what benefits are there for them and their children, and for people who migrate from here to come back home and find gainful and strong economic employment. And so on that, I own property right up the road on the beach. And I know the environmental impact assessment study is not in as yet. But based on the information I have from global information from on the seven hundred worldwide order, I know that it can be environmentally operated sound with little or no ecological damages. But economically, the people of East End must be the first to know, how are they going to benefit from it? And I happen to still just be a migrant of Grand Bahamian by birth, but I happen to have developed property not too far from here. And I have no fear, based on my tech information on your technology and environmental impact, safe assessment studies and all that, that it will and can operate good. And I help them to the economy of Grand Bahama. But bear in mind that the people must benefit one hundred percent or more. Other than that, it's not going to really sit well. So that is your, that is your, not struggle, that should be your position, to tell the people of East End that their land will be valuable, that the benefits, the social, economical benefits that will happen, the ambulance, the fire engine, the hospitals, the police stations, the different environmental and, what do they call it, light industry for development of sea crafts and seafoods and the different things that can really pose as a development for a country. For this, because you can really build a country, a city outside of Freeport and become really the icon of what's to do. But it has to be done, you know, with a purpose. That's all I have to say, and I'm going to be watching and waiting to see if you guys will start the process by getting with the town people and letting them know that you're there for them and that the benefits for employment from the smallest to the highest will be open to them for opportunity. And I just want to thank you all for this opportunity to speak, and that's my tendency.
Just to comment on that. I'm aware that we have not discussed this project in great detail with the community. I'm not shying away from that. There was an intent and a purpose behind it, is that we don't want to come here and discuss a project that wasn't tangible or real, that wasn't committed to. So we wanted to ensure that we had first and foremost a commitment from the government and from our shareholders that have done two years' work for this project, so we can discuss something real with you. I'm aware there's been a lot of companies that have come here and made false hope and false promises about their investment into the country. And we don't want to start on that first. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I'll commit that every first confrontation we have will start here, in East Grand Bahama. So the information we release, the technical team, the discussions that we have around our environmental strategy, our engineering design will start here, because this is the people it affects the most. So that's my first promise to you. The second one, I know, is my job to give you the opportunity with this project to assess it based on information and facts, and to be the first to apply for the jobs, to sign up to the training. I'll make that promise to you as well. It will start here, and the opportunity is what I'm going to deliver. It's up to you how you decide to take it, whether you want the politicians to win their arguments, or whether you want to stand up and sign in my name on this paper. So we have, our office is intended to be obviously local here, and we intend to build one, which will add further construction jobs, further economical benefits. As a starting point, we've already signed an office here in East Grand Bahama, sorry, in Grand Bahama. We've signed a lease, and the office should open once it's furnished in the next, I think, sixty days. So we do have an office here, with a lease we signed. No, unfortunately, it's in, because we want to build and almost do it.
Good afternoon, Pastor Cecil Camp. We welcome you here tonight, sir. I'm very optimistic about this project. To be honest with you all, I don't think I had a strong intention of being here. My oldest son, who was here at thirty years old, I'm now fifty-seven, he said, Dad, I think you need to be here. You do not know me, sir. But in time to come, if you were to start this business, you will get to know who Cecil Camp is. I'm a son of the soil, I was born and raised here. I believe in my heart, from what I've experienced in my lifetime, if anybody who liked the environment is Cecil Camp, I have lived to prove who I am. Western had its full share over the years, Freeport had its full share, East End never had its share. There are people who came here with an orchestrated effort to destroy and stonewall. That can't happen. Let me give the people a strong message. The man that spoke before you, he is my friend. With all respect to all who visit, let us deal with our affairs. And I really mean that, you understand? But I told Phil, one of the things that I've learned as a pastor, don't ever get upset because you're going to lose your point. I respect, don't worry about it, Deputy Prime Minister, Peter Tynnes, Chris. Peter Tynnes, as far as I know, as far as I can recommend, would not take a chance to sign an agreement for this project. If you don't feel it will happen. No, I am not rich, I am not close to being poor. Okay? But what are we more concerned about to those who are concerned about the environment? What is more important, perhaps than trees or the lives of people?
The lives of people.
Yes, because if you don't have jobs, are young people going to start again? Of course, I'm really very careful, we're going to start it tonight. I'll talk later. I'm going to stay to my point. This is our community. We have lived for a long time, sir, for this to happen, and neither of you can stop that?
I want to say, bless him, Eddie. All the press, all these, all of my friends, all of us, we just cannot see it. It's been a school, that's a school, no, it brings never, right? And I'm going to say right up front, I support the project. I worked at Sunrise Point and for a while, for several years. My son ran away to school for his scholarship. As a result of for a while, I didn't give my dad anything to go and see what he want. And they wouldn't have the time, they said, no, just for sponsorship, you guys. So what I'm simply saying is, most of these people who is here making noise in the market, they don't have no ties, he said, they might retire here, they don't spend the money here. I have a company that drives five hundred miles a day, going to the hotel, picking up gas and bringing them up to East End. You know, five hundred, you imagine, three, four trips a day, sixty-one maybe, sixty-nine. Sometimes for one way down, old man, babe. So when it comes to the environment, that's how I make my living. I go up in the water, I get a grandson, he loves to fish. You know what it is to die? I rap to a probed lobster. I died around Stataway, I used to wait there. And you, in that harbor, I used to dive enough lobster to feed the whole compound, alright? The whole compound. We have species, a lot of people don't even know exists, in these hours. We have snup, I was in Miami, I was a snup. You know, so if it's that much damage to the environment, why are these invasive species coming here? A species that not from the Grand Bahama. I saw a big school of snup out of Spumkin Bay in this, and Stataway, alright? You go around there, Jerry, schools of fish, okay? You live in the environment, I eat a lot of fish, and stuff like that. I'm a fisherman by fine, I got it in my blood. And I was trained in the electric field, alright? I worked with that, that's still, I don't know, electric. So I've been around this, we know about, I started learning refinery, see, we have a dumb stuff. Safety officer, fire. Oh, what you, what you telling? We have people in every facet of the community, and each one does a special company. So don't feel like the people in East Grand Bahama don't have no sense, alright? For me, listen, man, you step first, remember, I'm here to get them, alright, I know them, alright? And furthermore, like I say, we confess, the wise man came for peace. So I don't want you all to feel like we stepped back the push. We want to see development come to East Grand Bahama too, alright? Now, I know we've been shortchanged from Stataway and Sunrise Point, but if you allow the people to give an input, I don't give it all as a agreement, but like I said, if you allow the community to give an input, I don't mind the noise in the market, because like I said, I listen and I read all the newspapers, everything, electoral, all the newspapers, and then all the shows, even that we think. So what I'm saying is, yes, there's a lot of noise in the market, but all we must say, come in and ask the price of the fish. We welcome you to East Grand Bahama. But we're going to hold you accountable. I wish them fellows would tell you about Stataway. I get very passionate about it. I get very passionate, I know, I can't help but duck myself, but when I can hear you come and you can carry on, you know, like I said, some of these fellows don't come to even buy a pair of food, we got some restaurants here, you know, they cook breakfast, they cook lunch. I ain't seen none of these people in years, years. We was in a meeting on Saturday, and they gave local government the privilege to submit names to raise a meeting, alright? Me and Mr. Qui for the school together, alright? Your twenty, he's my bro, okay? Yes, we looking for triple down, in fact, we looking for tangible input from the community, okay? Sunrise Point, they giving a lot of scholarships, but how much from East Grand Bahama? How much? Ralph, he thought I'd be in medium range with you, that was one of the ones he used to hop on. Like I said, we are looking for input, so this company, they're going to support you one hundred percent. Don't mind these fellows who making noise, they're in higher, they got money, like that. I have to give what people they have, how much you have, how much you reach out to, huh? How much you reach out to? Come on. We, when the kids got to go to sports, me and my wife and one of the teacher care of an hour car, we don't have a bus. We care of an hour car, I've been doing it for years. Primary school, till I'm down to junior high. So all I'm simply saying is, a lot of these people here, yeah, they got money, but put your money where your mouth is. We, we, look, we just think of the other people, alright? We want, we want what is best for our community. I don't feel like we don't know, because you check with any one of the industrial companies, you're going to see people from East Grand Bahama, they are at a whole, high positions. High position, you know? I don't want to bribe them, boss. My son, yeah? He's one of the youngest fighters from SUNY Maritime College.
Thank you.
SUNY Maritime College, okay? I don't got the money to send him away. What? I might run him for a year and a half, and tell him maybe greatest kind of scholarship, okay? So all I'm simply saying is, that's true phrase, the wise man lived down from the east.
That's right.
And eh, not me, can I? That's the name of East Grand Bahama and Islam Bahama, God gave him speaker. So, like I said, don't underestimate this as political football. I remember El Paso, N1. We kick them around. Now the US get more liquefied natural gas, they need to export it. So time brings changes, okay? When I was growing up, people used to say, "You can't breathe breath," but man, broad skin, and breathing right now, you know? So this is the day it can't be living. God gave us a great thing, and East Grand Bahama doing it, nobody think fast.
That's right.
Nobody.
That's right.
Nobody. We have people making meaningful contribution very fast in this, this, this country, alright? Alright, so I don't want you all to feel like, "Yeah, we about to wash it." We got what it takes.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Shuffle Heffernan. I am not from Hyrock. Which is my Grand Bahama. God knows that Grand Bahama needs something to happen for it. No doubt about that. However, there are a lot of considerations, and I think you started wrong when you tell us only one question. I have a whole lot of questions. We have a science, I brought in a scientific team from Canada to do dives off Pinnus Point, others, and Lewis Yard. They did a preliminary study, and they discovered that the marine life in that area is probably about thirty percent of what the adjacent areas are and what it used to be. Thirty percent or less of the marine life in that area. We got called to a site in Pinnus Point two weeks ago. They were drilling a soakaway. And for more than thirty minutes, what was coming up?
Oil.
Oil. Black oil.
What's your point?
And after the oil, and this was when they hit the wa, the freshwater table. And after the oil, come cloudy, smoky water.
What's your point?
For a long time. My point is that refineries
dirty business.
Do these kinds of things to the communities. You've got a lot of oil under the ground in Pinnus Point, what I've said to the government, if this is a legitimate company, let them go down in the industrial area. Move the residents from there, because that's already an area that has been impacted. Do not come and destroy the pristine area that we have in other areas of Grand Bahama. The other concern I have, sir, one disrespect to you, I do not know you, but I did go online and read. And one of the things that concerned me is that none of the persons initially are part of your company that were on the website, actually represent who they say they are. And I have great concern about that. And then when your company went and wiped the website to remove the misinformation and take off certain names, I wonder why you had to do that? If you are who you say that you are.
What's your point?
I have, I have lost, I have lost at least four cousins. Younger than me, to cancer. In the Pinnus Point, others, Lewis Yard area. They lived there all of their lives. So refineries do come packing heavy blows. And so, when I look at what we have seen so far, the biggest problem I have is, who are we dealing with here? Because there have been so many misinformation, uh, untruths that relate to your company. I wonder how to be trust you and believe what you say. And what happens here in Hyrock, or Eastern, as relate to a refinery, will affect all of Grand Bahama. And we've got a lot of grand behaviors in the grave today because of the pollution from the refinery. And our government has not regulated it. And you don't seem to be somebody who I think will fall under the regulation, even if we had it. And that is my concern, okay?
They only want jobs, don't worry about that.
Thank you very much.
That's very disrespectful. Very disrespectful. Don't even try the candles.
They come to cause trouble.
They come to cause trouble. That's all they come for.
Good evening, everybody. So many people from East Grand Bahama are out here. It shows that people of East Grand Bahama are concerned about this project, either from, from an economic or environmental perspective. My name is Justin Lewis. I am the Bahamas Initiative Manager for Bonefish and Turtle Trust. Bonefish and Turtle Trust is an international non-profit conservation organization focused on the conservation of bonefish and turtle. Oh, sorry. This is more, so for our organization, um, we are concerned from the environmental perspective. The area where, if you're opposed to what Oban is right in the middle of, Bonefish spawning migration pathway.
I guess that's how it is.
Talk about respect. Show them some, show them some respect.
It is right in the middle of spawning migration pathways. So by putting a large port for dredging to stop bonefish from migrating to their spawning grounds, it's also in between two national parks that both have spawning, spawning sites. And the prevailing winds and the currents are out of the southeast. So say something was to happen, we hope that nothing ever does happen, but something was to happen, it's going to impact all the free port, it's going to impact all the spawning sites. Also in that area, there's very healthy, um, uh, coral reefs, which one of the fishermen was talking about, uh, that he depends for his livelihood. A lot of the guides, the bonefish guides depend on that area for their livelihood, especially when there's a strong north wind like what we're having today. Most of the guys get pushed down towards the south side to come and fish. So, I guess my question is, why, why was there a heads of agreement signed prior to a proper EIA put in place? And within, within that heads of agreement, you can only be fined by the government if something was to happen, three point five million dollars. Three point five million dollars can't fix anything. It's gonna, if, but just the bonefish sharing itself can contribute to excess of a hundred point one million dollars annually. It's a sustainable, renewable natural resource. And the most important resource in the Bahamas is the ocean. If we don't want the ocean, we don't have anything, so.
So I think I got two questions from that. First is why the EIA wasn't done?
Yes.
So as an organization, we were categorically informed by both governments, because this had gone through two governments. So do you mind just, um, we were categorically informed, in order for an EIA to proceed and be completed, we need to do consultation with the BEST Commission, which is an independent body that reviews environmental impact and approves them. The BEST Commission were not permitted to meet with us or refused to meet with us until the EIA, until the heads of agreement was signed. So we followed a process that was dictated to us by the consultants that we have, one of which is Keith Bishop from Islands by Design, he's an environmental engineer, he's been doing environmental studies in, in the Bahamas for thirty years. So that was the process we were told we had to follow, is the process we have followed. And now we have had a site visit from the BEST Commission, we have had our scoping meeting. But the key point is, this project will not proceed until the EIA is done, the mitigations are put in place, and an independent body appointed by the government you elected determines this is safe to proceed with and protects the environment in the best possible way.
Okay, so, can I ask, so, let me say just...
Your second question was?
Sorry?
You had a second question?
But the other thing is, so, okay, do you have an EIA, do you have an EIA done by consultancy that you provide, correct?
Yes, I would.
Yes, it's on. Would you, would you attest to bringing in outside entities like the Bahamas National Trust or organizations like ourselves to do our own EIA along with Mr. Keith Bishop?
I think, so the government are free to appoint, whoever they need to appoint, to assess the environmental impact assessment. And to challenge that assessment and to throw their recommendations forward, which we, they, we would need to adhere to for an environmental management department. So I see no reason why that question can't be asked of the government under their review as an independent body, free to appoint whoever they want to review our EIA. And you can challenge it that way.
No, but would you, why, my question is, do you not, I don't, I, it'd be great if the government asked this, but would you want us to participate? Why don't you ask us to participate?
I have no objection to it. I have no objection to it. I think the question sits with my environmental consultant in terms of how that would work practically, I'm not an environmentalist. I've got no objection to it. I've made a statement earlier today, my job is to deliver a long-term sustainable project in the most environmentally friendly way. So if you can add input to that and help me design a better project that sets a benchmark for global terminals and refineries, I'm not going to object to that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, Mr. Sand. I think East Enders are excited about the possibility of this project coming to fruition. However, I think it's the process, um, that will be questioned, certainly I. Um, first, let me, let me address the East Enders. Every single person here tonight have a stake and will be affected, whether they're from Eastern or Western with this project. So let's not dismiss them and give them the courtesy and respect of at least letting them speak. My name is Lady Amber Happer Malto, no relation to Shuffle. My medical cord is planted here. I need explanation as to when this is going to happen, what the environmental impact. I can see it's just not enough to create six hundred jobs. I think it's time to stop with your jobs and start being shareholders, okay? How then? How then is this going to create entrepreneurs? How then is this going, going to create business persons, not just in Eastern, but in Grand Bahama? Can, can you guarantee that at the end of this process or project, that our beaches will remain virgin? That our people will be educated, that we will be far more advanced than now than we are then than we are now? I'm a two-time breast cancer survivor. And when I got breast cancer, I was living in Paradise Island. I would run like forest thumb. So what happened was that that was as a result of environmental impact. How, how did we get to this point that you, Mr. Sand, as a foreigner quote-unquote comes here and have to introduce this project and we East Enders know nothing about it? I just think it's disrespectful, it's disgraceful, and it needs to be addressed. I mean, as Reverend Belloh alluded to, we human beings, treat us as such. That's all we ask. And that's my ten cents.
So just before, I just respond to the questions that are in that statement. So, so in terms of process, you know, we, we are now going through the full environmental impact assessment process. I mentioned earlier the BEST Commission have been on site, and environmental consultants have sit down with them to discuss the terms of reference. And upon getting that direction, we fully intend to have communication with the public and share information with you around our designs, the outcome of any environmental data we've collected, and our strategies to mitigate the, the environmental impacts. So we'll definitely and most certainly consult with you on a regular basis from here on in.
Thank you. My name is Kandor Colebrook, now KCX, Solution Radio. Your name says Oban Energy. Well, when you Google your name, it says Oban Energy LLC. Could you explain to the people what the LLC means?
An LLC is a limited liability company, so it's a type of corporate structure in America that's available to people. So you can have an incorporation, or you can have a limited liability company. It's just, it's just the format of an organization.
LLC also made it, one of the owners need to be a local, fifty percent shares. Who's that local that owns fifty percent of the shares if you have an LLC company?
In America?
An LLC company needs to own, it needs to be a resident, needs to be a resident.
I think it might be, it, it, well, best, I'm not, I'm not a corporate structuring lawyer of any sorts.
Well, just Google it, guys.
Well, okay, we've, we've followed corporate laws, we incorporated Florida, LLC. We did authority laws. It may be that if the statement is fifty percent have to be local residents, it should be a cumulative local residents.
Okay, thank you.
Collectively, I'm fifty percent, which is...
It was confusing to me as I asked the question, that's all. But when I hear people talk about a job, wow. Your name has never ceased to amaze me. Let me ask the question. When I, when I hear people talk about jobs, you know, it hurts me to hear people talk about a job and not an employment. Job is temporary employment. We should start seeking for employment. Now, when you talk about cancer, you look at a cancer survivor, stage four, bone cancer. Through my corner in Hawksville, twenty people died from the same type of cancer I, I had. Okay, but there's no pain like cancer. Go ahead and get your ordinary family. I go back home to Anderson's, brother. You know, go and get your ordinary family, get your job. I'm going. Y'all, you know who I speak for? I speak for the future generation that is not here. I'm speaking for the unborn behavior. Y'all just looking for a job, but our unborn won't even have a conscience. Thank you very much, sir.
Well, I would just like to first reiterate that I do live in Hyrock, but I am property owner at Turtle Reef. And also, I would like to know what are the years' experience in refinery that your group has? Because when you pull up Oban Energy, there's an Oban Calvary, which you're not affiliated with, and there's Oban that you developed in West Palm Beach, Florida on June sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, Mr. Quaid. So I want to know what is the years of experience that are coming to this table? Because it seems like there really isn't with the people in the, in the front of what's happening.
So in answer to that question, there's two levels of experience of this type of project. The first is the financial realization of what is a greenfield project. That is the ability to develop a project with attracts the financial, financial investment to make it a success, to do that money that is in the project. So that's my background, that I've got fifteen years' experience in financial markets, working across different spectrums. Most importantly, for the last eight years, funding greenfield projects for government entities, quays by government entities and other entities. From an energy perspective, which will be released soon, is we have a wide management team. A number of those individuals have worked in the energy sector for over twenty to thirty years, and have vast experience in running terminals and oil refineries. And those announcements will come soon. This goes back to another point that was raised earlier, it wasn't a question, it was a statement regarding our website. I'd like to address that. Our intent was always to get to the heads of agreement until we had a real project. With the avoidance of any confusion, Oban Energy was set up specifically for this development. There are no other operating interests. Upon the heads being signed, it was always our intent to then put in place the management to ensure the execution of the project from both a construction point of view and a operator point of view. And those announcements will come, unfortunately, as we all saw in the media, the missteps, as the prime minister has already addressed, happened. We had to take the profiles down so we can then... We had to take the profiles down so we can then put on the new profiles.
And I think we're also stepping back. We're looking at ourselves as the Hamians, which we all should. It's our country. This is what we have to live in, and this is our home. But we have so many people here that I look around here that are foreign investors that have come here and put money into our country, hard-earned money, and bought on these pristine beaches that are gonna be ruined. Do we not have a memory of when Disney came here? And Disney, yes, we made some money, but how was the silt left in the water? For how many years in the beaches that were ruined? That's what we have to look for.
Hi, Paul Miller from Grand Bahama. The company that I own, Executive Marine, actually does ninety-five percent of the diving for both Borko, which is Buckeye, and is now diving for Statoil. And I understand, and I have this concern also, that Borko in the past had a terrible track record when it came to the environment. Statoil, before Statoil, had a terrible track record when it came to the environment. Buckeye has now bought Borko. And I can attest to the fact that they pay special attention to the environment. They spend a lot of money on the environment. Statoil, the same thing. Statoil Moroi has shown to me that they care about the environment, that they care about what's going forward. I think, I think as a Bahamian, I would like to make sure, first and foremost, that the environment is going to be protected. And I think you are showing good faith, but we need to see more good faith. We need to see these reports. The reports need to be almost put out in a public forum. So we as the Hamians feel more comfortable. Because obviously, you've taken the time to invest in our country, and I applaud you for that. I think we should applaud anybody coming to our country and investing in it. But to further go on, I guess my question to you is, what are your steps going to be as far as showing the public your environmental impact studies? And how can we contribute to that, to quell those concerns?
So the steps that we're taking is, so once we get the guidance from the BEST Commission, we're gonna complete our engineering designs. I've said before, these are to use BEST in class engineering techniques and technologies that mitigate environmental impacts. Thereafter, once we've got the full report and designs, my technical team will be doing another meeting like this with the public to show how they've looked at the environment, what concerns they've had, how they've mitigated them with the design work from an environmental consulting perspective. And then it's open to the forum to ask questions again and to have their input.
Okay, and then I think I have one more thing. I did say we do the diving for both Buckeye and Statoil. And there, now, I can say, I can attest to this, that the reefs and the coral heads and the pipeline itself, apart from directly in front of the terminal, says are in fairly good condition. I mean, we dive in every day. We can come down to Statoil and we dive on the pipeline at Statoil, on the pipeline at Borko. Fishermen put their fish traps on the pipelines to catch fish. They are artificial reefs, essentially. I said, I think that with modern technology, with the scrubbers and whatnot that you're introducing, we need to know more about that. I think if you educate us to a point where we are comfortable, not only educate us, prove that you are actually going to put these processes in place, we will have a level of comfort that will give everybody an essential feeling of moving forward with us. But we need that comfort, and that comfort's very important for everybody here in East Grand Bahama, for Grand Bahama and for the Bahamas as a whole. But I do applaud you, and I wish you a lot of success. But we are all watching. We're all watching. We want to make sure you do this right. If you aren't gonna do it, let's do it right.
Can I just respond to the last statement? So just to confirm, this is the first of a series of meetings that we're gonna have. So I think it was important that I came out and met with the people and discussed our philosophy and country policy and answered some of your big concerns. But this is the first meeting we're having. It's not gonna be the last. So we will come back with more information. We will come back with our technical team. And we'll hopefully provide you what we're looking for, attempt of our strategy in real terms.
Thanks. Good night, everyone. My name is Felice Hill. I am a Bahamian resident. I was born and raised. I have two children with also Bahamians. What you said tonight, Pastor, to me was very offensive because it affects everyone in Grand Bahama. We're all one, and the children have the future here. They can answer me and the family.
I know what I said, and I don't apologize to you.
That's fine. If you're... My question is, who all is a part of the executive board? What experience does each person have in managing such a plant? In the event of an issue, what steps will Oban take to resolve the problem? How much money are you prepared to spend to correct the incident? What if it exceeds the three million? Will you react? Will you retract this project should the environmental assessment reveal negative impacts? How close are your plants to national parks and trusts? And will this lead to cheaper fueling Grand Bahama?
That's another question, lady.
Yes, it must be by three of us.
So let me start with the management team experience. So I think, I've made a few statements to them. You can hold me responsible for those. So we will be announcing in the coming days the new management team. And you will see their profiles and experience in the energy sector and generally with greenfield projects. And I can assure you, you'll have no fears in terms of our capability at that point. It's unreasonable to suggest that a company would invest two years of their time, ten million when they're gonna fall down if they don't have the right management team in place. With respect to the fines you mentioned, these are fines. These have nothing to do with our ability and the cost of repairing or fixing an environmental issue or any other incident. The fines are to relate the government's concerns around what they were filing at that point at the time. That does not relate to what we're prepared to invest to fix the problem. If we have an oil spill, we've got a leak somewhere, we've got a problem somewhere, and without an operation, there isn't a business. It's in our interest to fix it. So the capital used to fix or mitigate or rectify any mistakes will have to happen. So it not relates it, and I don't have to use that. You have to now remind me of some of your other questions.
Okay. Will you retract this project should the environmental assessment reveals negative impacts?
Yes, our policy on the retraction of the project is not to retract it, but to mitigate those impacts. So I think there's been a lot of news around this, around the environmental studies don't conform to government expectations, that they can't cancel the heads of agreement. But let me tell you the motivation we had behind that. What we wanted to do was ensure that we had the time to go out and find new expertise and technologies to mitigate any impact that the government were happy with in our existing design and methodologies. So if they decided, yes, you use BEST in class, but it's still not good enough, we want to have the time to go out in confidence to invest more money to find the right technologies. Secondly, in order to ensure the financing that we have in place remains in place, now financially, there's certain level of confidence that the project will still continue if we manage to eliminate the concerns that they have. So we have no intent, we want the project to work in an environmentally safe way. We would like the time and the opportunity to make that happen at our cost of risk, knowing this is a project to proceed with at that point.
Good evening. My name is Terry Case. I am a Grand Bahamian. I have lived with my family in East Grand Bahama for fifteen years. I am proud to have raised my children in this East End environment. I am not opposed to development and opportunity for Grand Bahama. Lord knows Grand Bahamians deserve it and need it. I am, however, vehemently opposed to the location proposed for this development. The environment, the beachfront between Statoil and Pelican Point is some of the most pristine beachfront and marine environment that Grand Bahama has to offer. I am not willing to risk that environment on a company that's only been around for two years and has no other refineries anywhere in the world. Grand Bahama has an industrial park. You've heard testimony here tonight about the problems experienced by the residents of Penders Point, Lewis Yard, Hunters. It's been going on for fifty years. You mentioned an investment in housing for Bahamians. Why not use this investment in housing to relocate those folks in Penders Point that have been struggling with disease and chemicals and a horrible environment for all these years? We have an industrial park, and that's where this sort of thing should continue, with the relocation of those folks that live in that area and have struggled with that kind of environment. Secondly, the number of jobs you're talking about, the construction opportunities initially aside, two hundred jobs is nothing. Most of the people in this area, myself included, are happy to drive into Freeport for employment. I don't think that the proximity for people to work here than it does for them to get up in the morning and drive into Freeport. Can you answer why we should trust a company that's only two years old and has no oil refinery experience anywhere else in the world? And why would you not consider your location to be where we already have an industrial park in Grand Bahama?
So companies are formed with people. And the people, as I mentioned earlier, have the experience in the oil refinery and in the energy business. And also in the construction business. So that statement's incorrect. Or the company may be new, the management team have the experience to do these types of projects. And as I've said before, that will be disclosed in the coming days. And you can make your assessment at that point. With respect to the industrial zone, I believe that various sites were looked at, and there wasn't ample space for memory within that zone of this side project at that point. So everyone would consider other things we're trying to do. So I hope that answers all your questions.
Thank you.
Good night, once again. I just wanted to say, and I want to charge you some, that in your environmental regulatory operational system, that you follow whatever positive report is given and whatever negative is given, you'll be charged to correct and to use whatever technological, mechanical systems there is in the world to mitigate to a zero level. And I also charge you not to make the mistake, and the Bahamians, I'm gonna charge them, not to be silent and watch the mistake that is being made today, where the ocean is being brought into the land to overrun the people of Penders Point, South Bahamian, et cetera, and nobody is saying anything. And for the Bahamian people to rise up in the face of an obvious ecological and environmental disaster that is about to happen in Penders Point, Eight Mile Rock, Regency Park, and South Bahamian, given the right tidal surge during the hurricane season, and nobody is opening their mouth. But we will charge you to not operate in those slack, dangerous manners that is being operated in now. And the Bahamian people will charge you and will come up front on you because I indict them for not doing the same thing for what is happening right now to the Bahamian people for Penders Point, Eight Mile Rock, South Bahamian, and Regency Park, which is under a disaster to be overrun with a surge, to operate effectively and conservatively and to protect the people and the environment of East End, given all of the regulatory enforcement bodies and operational features. I charge you to operate that way and to not, and I now say to the people of Grand Bahama, not to be slack in their criticism constructively to allow what is happening in the corner Eight Mile Rock to overrun and to destroy the people given the right tidal surge.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna start right after the gentleman, after the former Member of Parliament of Marco City and homegrown product of East Grand Bahama, Pleasant Rich Water. I think that's a gentleman we start with, and we will end with him.
No, you didn't stop it. See me, yo? Oh, get it right now, Peter.
Also, by way of recognition, let me recognize the Member of Parliament for Marco City and Minister for Youth, Sports and Culture, the Honorable Michael Pintar. The Member of Parliament for Central Grand Bahama and Parliamentary Secretary in the Ministry of Works, Sir Ivan Lewis. And by way of apology, let me recognize the spouse of the Deputy Prime Minister of the province of the Bahamas, the Deputy Prime Minister. The Deputy Prime Minister is away on national business. He regrets not being here, but he will make every effort to attend the remaining series of time in East Bahama. He has, in fact, though, made his contribution in Parliament over the various weeks and months about his thoughts on this project. But you will get an opportunity to hear and see him in person.
Good evening. Ishmael Line, East Grand Bahama. Seen citizen sixty-seven years. I have a lot to say, but I think the pressure has been L M U. But I don't think that's where I want to go. So I have a lot, but I wouldn't say it now. Peter just said that he has apologized for Member of Parliament, but as you can see, there's no one here on the government side who we can show a question at concerning your meetings. And you, no, I saw him, they, they, he's gonna say that. No, we got a Member of Parliament, right? I understand. Peter just said that he is a Member of Parliament for his area. We have a Member of Parliament, but I accept Peter's apology. I accepted Peter's apology, and that's the reason why I still appear, but I still decide to say it. You know, we have our own Member of Parliament for this area. And I have some things to say, but I don't think it is fair for me to throw those pressure on you. Because we should have been up to date on some other questions before I get to you. I don't want to come and run and tell I speak with a Member of Parliament and find out why we at this stage, the three ladders in the ground that we jump up on. That's my problem. I talk a lot, and I talk all night, but still talking, why is that? Putting pressure on you. All that you said tonight, it really didn't dawn on me. Because I want to hear who made those commitments for you to come here to decide to put a terminal in my area for sixty-seven years that I was here. I built a home in this area, cut wood with hand saw. Thirty-five years I have a nice home. Thirty-five years I cut wood with hand saw building. So you know I love this area. Mother born in Free Town, daddy born in Hyrock. I born in Old Free Town. Grew up here all my life. I love this area. Now, I'm an engineer by trade, mechanical engineer. I certified. Got certificate and everything. License of London, British license. Engineer, aircraft pilot. I'm not looking for a job. I have a small business that I feed myself living in Freeport. I'm getting ready to send and retire from there. But my main objective is to look forward to the future. In a nutshell, oil is not friendly to humans. And it's not friendly to the environment, which we live around. We all know that. I'll never forget down in Continue Point area when the shipyard was coming here and we had a meeting and maybe start many years ago when I was trying to get in politics. And I had some questions pertaining to, there was a barge trailing this whole hemisphere for months. Could not done the degree. And no one would accept it. After the day, I don't know if you recall, I tried to say, who accepted it? I don't think I finally get who accepted the degree. But my question was at that time, ships coming in here, and they have lag that is on the border, and that's the purpose of fighting corrosion or what have you. And my question was, when these ships come here? And they get sandbars and what have you, what are we going to do with those degrees? The question was, and it was very insulting to me too, like directly was saying to me, hey, shut up, we're trying to do this thing. But I am not ready for job, job, job. If we just be greedy and selfish and get it down and not able for our great grandchildren to see this happen. So I asked the question, well, what are we going to do with those degrees? And let me tell you, and we all know, I was over here, and I see what's going on. Most of that stuff gets submerged when there's sandbars, and then the barge submerged and goes to the bottom to let the ship off, most of that go. And the side part, we don't have no one who is policing that. And that area, there are fishes, they're born with eggs, they hatch their eggs, not in the ocean, the eggs are hatched in mangroves. Where the fishes just hide people and hook, until they get big enough to fight for themselves. The mangroves in that area is destroyed. The trees and what have you in that western area is being destroyed. You don't see that around the next tree there. I mean, it's logical facts, and it's not going to get there. I asked a question, they said in one job, they asked a question, but digging a harvest and what have you, the real is, I travel a lot, I see, and we all see it, there's no rock in the US. All those boulders and bierock, they come from Grand Bahama, the majority come from Grand Bahama. And they're going up north and what have you. And I said, how we, what are we doing? We digging up this Grand Bahama? It ain't that large, eighty-seven mile, okay, one, 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 eight, seven, eight. And in what year would we stop? And would we left? We all, for that, if they stay or if they be alive, it's because while we going to the West, this is facts, I ain't lying, no politics, no nothing, this is facts. Grand Bahama is being cut off from the West, just maybe two hundred feet. We all know. And all we have around that is water. The system has changed with hurricane come. I walked this area, I walked from Queenstown, down in the harbor, the Hoxville, there was one little road, and we passed, we go on the beach and stopped the house, down in the corner overnight, and go on next morning. So no one can tell me how the area was. We at a stage now where we being so selfish and want jobs, jobs, jobs. And I want jobs too, I'm not coming on now, but my children, grandchildren want jobs. We have to live, we need money. But we have to be careful what we accept. And I have one more problem, two questions now, I'll ask you, because I have a lot more, it would be table to my minister. Your question that I want to ask you now, you said that you have an office already?
We've signed the lease for one.
You signed the lease. Do you have anyone who you have attached to that office as yet?
We have, the office is open, so we've signed the lease, and I currently do it in a refurbished manner.
I understand that, but what I want to get at, we have a lot of smart people in the area, see, oh yeah. We breed pilots, doctors, lawyers, and what have you. We don't want to, you know, we all grandamen, see, I understand, I'm not okay. Canada may be one of us, but you know, I believe this is our area. And even with this meeting that we having now, I'm not going to be really, you know, downplaying for it, but we should be having this meeting with East Enders. I mean, we are Behamenians, I understand that, but this is a face meeting in public that we can speak of some things that may affect us in the, or will affect you in the long run in our immediate area. And it is not fair for us to say some things, because, as I say, it's not fair. We have something to say, and as we always say, you ain't born here, you ain't from here. We are Behamenians, but we should have our face saved and questioning you on some other matters rather than abroad. I am disappointed in the way how it has been presented to us. And in the future, if this project go on, it will go on. This, when a project come this far, and we were not consulted in the beginning, I am still baffled as to why are you here now telling us what you intend to do, and then ask us in a faceless, what are your team for this? Documents that then almost I can sign, and agreements and stuff verbally, and maybe sign and signature have been made, and you're here now. It only confuse us and cause us to say no or yea, but it still will go on, you know? So I have some more questions to speak with the government. But then you go to form your office, I don't want it to be where, now, just me, I don't want to be where a Pierre Islander or a Long Islander is in charge of the office. And then, and then we go there, as East Enders, as it happened in Burma, I was engineer before, with Burma, like so, right, for an engineer. I also do good captain, I'm a good engineer, one of the best things going on in this island. And I'm not looking for no job, I'm not looking for no job now, I'm certified, but my problem is, please, then you get a job, a prime job, consult us in this area before you have Mr. Deso down running the police department, and then make a telephone call, and someone come from Pierre Island, La Ronge, and me right here. No, I'm sorry, can't assist you on this side. As Boko did, I worked there, and saw fellows come from Nassau, straight to the airport, come from, straight to go, and walk and wait, and leave, and leave people like, the same fellow here who's in charge of Boko, Boko, the right under the department, Mike Martin, Leroy Line, Fred and Anna Julie Davis, who's a doctor, they engineer, and all that. Right here, no, they can't help you all. And the couple in behind of them, they smooth them out and roll in some other people. It is not fair. Now, you're going to mess us up with oil and shorten our life, so make some jobs available for us that didn't be in the pipeline.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Alana Belacourt, and I am a crime Behanian. I was born, bred, and I will continue as a Behanian. Some of y'all probably know my father or my father. My father was Alan Belacourt. He taught up here, I don't know many years ago, he probably taught some of y'all. My mommy is Judy Belacourt, Judy Parker. She probably tell you all the stuff, the implications every once in a while, but I'm sure if you look at me real good, you'll see my mommy on my face, but anyway, I don't know. I'm not here to talk about politics, I'm not here to talk about jobs. How many of you have fathers, great grandfathers, cousins, sisters, who have lived off this land, who turned this land over, who toiled this land, who would go out there, who would bring back crawfish, grouper, lobster, and feed your families? And any, anybody? Yes? Yes? Can I get a yes? Yes, the fishing community, is it not? Yes, it is. Have any of you ever seen the Chihuahua, the Chihuahua, the Clifton Fair? Oil slicks for days, daily, covering the land, covering the sea. If something like that was to happen, where is it going to go? Where do you think it's going to go? It's going to go into Bahamas, the Lukaya National Park, that feeds the coral reefs, that feeds this community. Could you imagine? It's already hard, reefs are already dying, it's already hard to find conch and crawfish out there. How far you have to go? How much further are you going to have to go with oil slicks covering East Grand Bahama? And you can't find anything to eat. I have witnessed from day one, my neighbors are fishermen, my neighbors are bonefish guides, my neighbors are tour guides. We all have watched the deterioration of the coral reefs before our hours, in our lifetime. I speak for future generations. Please don't give my children. We don't own any part of this land, it is for future generations. And that's all I'm going to say.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Thompson, Grand Bahama, quite a few years. I question you as a businessperson, why would Obank Energy go into an oil business when it's a failing business? Green energy is where we want to go. We want to be green. Why not put a solar field here if you want to put something out here? Not like the nuclear, to the environment and to the people. Give me an idea of why you want to go into the oil business?
Before we commence in the project, we did a number of economical business feasibility studies. And oil consumption around the world is growing. And it's growing because you have this wonderful, what is it, this ironic state, where it's humans or humanitarian causes, means you want people to come out of poverty. So our prediction is by 2035, two billion people will come out of poverty, and now that consumption needs energy leads. And while you are for like, correct, a lot of energy leads will be made up by renewable energy sources, and the fuel mix will change, the reality is, the United States is predicted to become a net exporter, which provides an opportunity to move oil that they found, such as shale oil, into the Bahamas to process, refine, store, and to service the economy out in China and India. So in terms of the viability of the project, we've done a number of studies and financial models and market analysis to say it is viable and feasible to do that. The issue we had with, I guess, renewable energy in general, is renewable energy doesn't necessarily service the same market, because you can't store renewable energy in an efficient way and transport it to service the markets that I just mentioned, such as China and Africa. So in terms of the economical dynamics, the social dynamics of the world, that's where the opportunity sat, and it's why this project was financially backed down by its current shareholders.
If it was my money, I'd be putting it into green, not into something that's very deep around.
Good evening again. I just want to say that there's a lot of misconception, they keep on asking you with the two million dollars penalty, but anybody who's in the earth business, there's a company called CCC, I heard it's now called CCA. So, once you, once you're involved in the earth business, CCA, if you have an accident, an industrial accident, an earthquake, CCA would come in from wherever they're located. They have headquarters, they have an office in Fort Lauderdale, okay? So, Star Oil, Boko, the Bahamas Power Company, and Clifton Fair. Any, any, any environmental issues that they cannot handle on site, all they have to do is make one phone call, and whatever, whatever equipment you need to mitigate that problem, they would be, they would be here in a flash.
They couldn't help it, they got.
So, I mean, all this, but the two million dollar penalty is, your company, as an earth company, would have to pay the million dollar, it's something like an insurance. So if you have an accident, an earthquake, what do you have?
No, 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 come on, man.
So all this, and the government, uh, Earth Spill, National Earth Spill, Chemical Spill Conference, I think they have an ad hoc, alright? So, everybody in the world in the earth business, the government gathering together at this conference, and they run drills, okay? So, a lot of the stuff they run around with, you know, you're going to have to pay your insurance money, whatever your insurance money is, it's going to cover the stuff in the environment. So, we could run some tests, because a lot of these people making noise, they came right back and built a housing community right here in Hoxville. We, we, I need to hear this, and found us to build a home for like, yes, dollar.
And they moved because of the, because of the problem.
They closed the schools.
Because of the problem.
We'd be in school for a couple hours, but they come right back and build, I didn't get it. And I didn't get the sense of it. Why build a housing community if you being affected? When they, when they do city services, I didn't hear nobody complain. Nobody complained, they damaged all the mangroves and stuff. If you check East End, beyond Pelican Point, some of the most beautiful beaches are being damaged or being overrun by the mangrove, it's just a sharp, we need a plan. We have to control the mangrove. If you look at your yard, you will be able to get to your house, right? So, all I'm going to be saying is, yes, we have to co-access, we have to co-access. And I had friends who died, who can't see, who used to work at Boko too, and so running one. But like I say, everything have to co-access. I don't feel, I don't feel, I don't feel as though you guys, technology is better. Technology is better, so, again, I support you, one hundred percent.
I think you make a interesting point. I'll just take a moment to respond. How objective, like you saying, is to deliver a environmentally efficient project? And all I want is the opportunity to come and demonstrate that to you, and then you can judge me and hold me accountable. The fine that was in the heads of agreement for an environmental infraction was actually an incentive for us not to infract the environment. So we pay that money irrespective of how we repair any environmental issues. And we encourage them to do that, so that then encourages us to have the processes and the engineering in place, and the design in place, and things like having companies on standby so these things don't happen. Prevention is our number one policy, and mitigation is our second policy. And over time, when we go through these consultations, we'll share that information with you, and you can determine for yourself.
Good evening, my name is Pleasant Bridgewater. I am from East Grand Bahama, born and bred here, still live here. And I have the great pleasure of being able to walk the beach, run the beach, jog the beach, walk in the waters almost every day. And so I see the clean and pristine beaches and areas in the East End. And occasionally, though, I do smell some release from, I'm assuming it's from San Oil. So that, that obviously gives me concern. I am very much concerned about the environmental impact. And it is, in my mind, paramount that we hear the environmental impact study results. And I would dare say that, should it come back so negative, that the project should stop. I would prefer an eco-friendly investment. Yes, and it's that we need investments, we certainly do. We need opportunities, we need employment, and we need development. However, we must be very careful as to what comes in. And I'm not on either side of, because I'm still undecided about the project, because I don't have sufficient information. And there are some things that I am concerned about, because I do know that if you're preparing to make application to the government, there are certain resumes that must be submitted. And it's based on those resumes that a final decision, and some other things that a final decision is made. And so if you're going to be introduced now to new people, and they've changed, then that really means that there has to be some other consideration. And so the government, therefore, is not now having the same people that it approved earlier. Because I think you said something about, there would be some people introduced as to expertise, etc. So that gives me a little bit of concern. However, it is important that East Enders, that we look at the full picture. We should not challenge someone because they make a statement that you might not agree with. And so therefore, we need to look at the... And so therefore, we need to look at the whole thing objectively.
Thank you very much.
And sensibly. We need development, but we also need to know that whatever comes in, that we protect it. And if we're dealing with the environment, that is very, very important. That is crucial. And so therefore, there has to be something put in place that will police it. And so we're just asking that we be respected in the sense that if something is negative, going to affect negatively, then it should be dealt with immediately. And I'm going to say too that I'm a bit disappointed that I believe that this project was agreed at principle years ago. And this is the very first time that we are being introduced to it. I think that is poor.
Poor.
That is disrespectful to not only the East Enders, you know, but to the Bahamian people. We deserve better than that. We deserve more than that. And so, sir, I just wanna say, we appreciate your interest in investing in the Bahamas and your direction towards East End. And so, what we want it to be done in a way where there's mutual benefit. It's mutually beneficial. Not just coming in as an investor because it is a good investment, but we have to ensure that it is a good investment for the Bahamian people, and in particular, because we live in this area, the people of East End. Thank you.
I have to address some points that were raised in the last comment. So first and foremost, the disclosure of the management team or the information being released is new, but it's not new to the government. A lot of the people that they're going to announce soon have been involved in the project in some capacity. Some are shareholders, for example, and they have been disclosed to the government. There's no new information being disclosed when we announce the names and the profiles on the website. So that due diligence has already been conducted. Secondly, the assessment of the amount of capabilities at this stage is really about the consultants we hired, so our environmental experts and engineers that have been doing these projects for 30-plus years. And it was those resumes and those capabilities and their credentials that moved this project forward. And it's their assessment and their requirements that will now matter to the best commission. So the outcome of the environmental impact assessment, and most importantly, the mitigation strategies that we put forward, as I've said before, will be assessed by the best commission independent of us. They'll review it with an independent consultant, which they're free to choose, and they will come back to us with their suggestions. And there's one or two outcomes. You know, we either satisfy that this is environmentally friendly, that we can do and deliver on our promises, which is a sustainable project in an environmentally friendly way, or we can't, at which point we want the time to go out and find the new technologies to meet that objective. And if we can't do either of them, if we can't do either of them, then inevitably, from a business point of view, it means that the project won't be sustainable to have too many fines and too many costs to recover oil and environmental infractions. So there's a perfect balance in how we're trying to approach it, and it has to come out.
My name is Siavon Johnson. I'm most likely the person they told me to stay away from. Here's the issue I have. I hope that you would take the opportunity to first, release the government to release any information in relation to this thing so we can have the argument concerning this so-called level of confidentiality about the heads of opinion, about the letter that you sent. Maybe you could release that also, like you said that you receive. Or assume this is not verbal communication from the best commission that told you that you need to go or from BIA that you need to do this without best approval and all sorts of things based on our laws. And if you could, you know, just move us beyond the verbal authentication of what you say, if I provided the evidence that this is exactly what they told you to do, I would assume that my government provided you that in writing. But I want you to examine releasing the government from providing us with information. I represent about 2,600 people, but the collective of the raverns that you've met with. I have not converted that following into a church yet, but I assume that I still speak for them. And I am gonna ask, because I would like to be able to engage you beyond the talking back and forth. I believe in the word that communication is getting through, not talking to. And so I would like, because I have questions. I have questions like, after the end of life of this oil refinery, it is generally spoken that it costs about three or four times whatever refinery cost to build to remove it. Who is gonna be responsible for tearing down that oil refinery? And what causes this? But I understand the concept of limited liability corporation. I've had a number of them in the United States over my 30 years of being there. And the whole purpose of that was so that should something occur, I could walk away and not have any type of liability attached to myself personally or to my family or others. So I understand the paper game, the corporate structure. But we have questions concerning the, you know, the feedstock you're gonna use. We have questions concerning the technology that you're gonna use. We have questions concerning the financing you have. I'm of that generation. I ain't as intelligent as most Indians who did that. I entered with 60 years of education. But what I do have is a comprehensive understanding of whatever subject I want to engage. If I seek the intelligence of others out of my collective. You know, yes, you've talked about the oil refinery, but at no given time have you given us, the people, any type of intellectual capital for us to make any type of informed evaluation of anything I can ever do. A question I want you to maybe make to people of East Enders understand that when you sat in the office of the Prime Minister, that you signed an agreement with the citizens of the Bahamas, represented by the government, not an exclusive contract with the citizens of East End, if that is your understanding. Because if it is your understanding that you only signed a contract with the citizens of East End, then maybe we started the wrong prefects. And so, we are asking you, you know, you. If you, if we, if you want to really engage an individual based on the conversation that has been put in the public domain, your intent is to be a minimum of 45 years for the opportunity to remove it, to move into a additional 45 years. That's way beyond the lifetime of most of us who is alive here today and many of our, and many of our material. So we simply asking you that, in the same way you made the opportunity to speak with other individuals, with myself and some others, that let's have a coherent conversation, not aggravated, that we sit down and understand, and you could present your position, we could present ours, and we could basically find a middle round of conversation. But we are in the absence of information, and we have not provided any sort of shifting of information that basically leave us curious. We have information coming that's not matching us. And with all due respect, you said you're a businessman, involve this type of, the level of this thing. And if you could honestly, to me, say you would not be concerned about the shifting of information or the lack of information, then I would be concerned with your integrity also. So I ask you before you leave, or you can meet you in another place, that you accompany, if you're sincere. And in the same way you afforded the raverns or whatever select interest group that you made with, that you can afford myself and other individuals to have a coherent conversation, and I'm well able to find. And I don't put it against you. I'm just of a generation that's passed the Jazz World of Suckers. And excuse me, you see, like you wanna own, right? I'm one, at least one of them, that has this little idea that I can own my country, that I can own in my country, that I can participate in my country beyond the Jazz World of Suckers. Thank you.
So let me just respond to the key theme behind what you suggest, which I think is communication and transparency. And I encourage that. As I've mentioned, you know, I've done a number of projects in my time. And without the community getting the information they need, buying into the project, understanding our strategy, understanding our philosophy, and having dialogue in multiple forums, whether it's one-to-one with a small select group or a wider audience like today. I've encouraged, I'm gonna encourage that, and that's what I set out today. Right from the beginning, this is gonna be the first of many sessions we're going to have. This is the first time that I've been in, since the first week we've done public consultations. And I think we're on to four. We've done four already, and we've got a few more coming. And as I've already mentioned, our environmentalists will join us, our engineers will join us in future discussions. So I encourage all forms of exercise and communication. We're gonna be updating our website regularly from now on. We're gonna be engaging with the press more often. And we're gonna be doing more open sessions and closed sessions. So whatever you need in terms of public.
I'm so excited that they understand that we're going to talk about it. We want to be able to say something, and I can ask for more information, and you provide more information. Not really have to strain up, have one minute, two minutes, or you know, 50 people behind you.
I encourage that.
30, a $5 million contract. It's worth an hour or two, and having clarity.
And I encourage that.
Alright, good evening, evening. My name is Phil Thompson Junior. I'm gonna just speak on behalf of some of the young people that are asking from you. And I look forward to bantering from this project. I think the community wants it. The Bahamian people are afraid because of the negative publicity at first. But we'd like to, I guess, see that cleared up. I am interested in it because, Father and I, we have a pilot company in Freeport, Grand Mahama, in the Bahamas. So I'm definitely interested in the project, like my colleagues are. And shipping is our business, so if we bring in ships, we definitely. But it's not, it's not only me. It's just not to be why, why I'm gonna stand here because you said that you want East Enders to benefit. You want dialogue, you want this, you want that. Well, my question to you is, why didn't you, or why isn't Oban getting an office space in Hyrock or someplace in East End, Grand Mahama? Where someplace on East End could be rented, someone from East End, right, where he would make some of the rent money that the person in CEO's village is gonna make. And why can't we have a resident from East End in an office here, post up, even if no one's coming here to do anything, but we're in the company because we want information? So if you put an office in Hyrock, and you hire somebody to be in the office during office hours, even if they just come and collect letters or collect, whatever Oban is interested in or we are interested in Oban, I think that Oban should have stepped forward and with a good face for the East End people, ran an office here, manned an office here, and all those engineers and all those, all those employees and managers that post half from here. So, half of them could drive the East End road, half of them could buy food from the East End people, half of them could live in the East End area. And right off the bat, East End is starting benefiting from this work.
Entrepreneurial art, that's right. I encourage that. But this is, we have to be mindful, this, you know, we signed the HOA four weeks ago. And as you've seen, the reaction in the press is not going the best. While I use the president's terms, it was a misstep. But, you know, the HOA itself is committed to certain programs, including engaging local community. I said today, I start from East End. Your recommendations are welcome, and I intend to execute them and you can hold me accountable.
Ladies and gentlemen, love your attention, please. I wanna thank you all for coming out to this first in a series of town meetings. Let me again thank the Member Parliament of Mahalo City, Minister for Youth, Sports and Culture for your attendance, also Member Parliament of Central Grand Mahama, and Parliament of Central KI for your work. And I wanna give a special thank you to the Administrator, Roberts, who not only is a candidate here tonight, but saw to it that Oban treated the local government representatives who have been elected by the people of this district. All were invited to an exclusive meeting last evening. They had great attendance and spoke on behalf of the people of this Grand Mahama as well. And finally, as I called it, to give the benediction, I wanna thank Father Cooper for the use of this hall and church, this venue. And so, give yourselves a high, and let's give the law for city a big high. And thank you so very much to the President of Oban for coming out tonight and addressing your concerns. Father Cooper, please come. Oh, please fill up the freshmen's service in the back. The, we have a technical meeting. We have a technical meeting to attend. And so, for members of the media, all this, what is gonna do is we'll recap, a recap of tonight's meeting, and we will address the media another time. We have technical meeting to attend in the people area. That's it. He will recap, he will recap his impressions of tonight's meeting. And he has to go to a technical meeting. The persons who are only here for one day. Thank you, Father.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for your time that we have had here tonight. Father, we thank you for the information gained. And Father, we pray that as we continue to move forward, that you will direct our every step. Father, I hope you, Father, we pray that you be with us as we leave this place. We pray that you would visit our homes and drive far from them all that is evil. And may our Holy Spirit dwell within our homes, take us home safely, in Jesus' name.
This is moot, has the town, has the heads of agreement been signed already? And the EIA clause specifically already states that, no matter what it says, the government will order the project.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have to believe that if our leadership knew better, they would actually do better. Ladies and gentlemen, you have to believe that if our leadership knew better, they would actually do better. Peter, remember, two for the price of one! Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for watching. As you can see, it's never about us, it's about them. It's never about inclusion, it is about seclusion. Compress you, oppress you, and whatever. And I honestly believe that our leadership simply just don't have the ability to do what is necessary for the development of Bahamians. I really do. If they really would, they would do better. They can't. You cannot give more than you have. So what you see is the collective, what we experiencing today is the collective intelligence of Grand, of the representation we sent from Grand Bahama. No jobs. They haven't told you that there's, in this whole six hundred jobs, on average, is only about seventy jobs per year for the next twelve years when this, when this will be finished. They have been told, see, they have not been able to quantify and qualify where these one thousand people who will supposedly benefit, where they will come from, how will they benefit? Can you imagine that they're actually telling people, just send your, your skill set here, you know, those of you that can build a refinery using the new technology? The new technology, not the technology of forty years ago. They want you to, you know, you're qualified, we can hire eighty percent of you if you could meet the qualifications of advanced technology in refinery. There is no laws to protect our environment. We have some of the weakest laws there is. Those of you who are concerned will have to make sure that we immediately get upon our leadership and demand some environmental laws that I... Okay. We have to, nice meeting you. All right. We have to, we have to basically have them, basically, just pass some environmental laws.
CJ, how much does that fellow worth? What do you? Yeah, let's go.
Just want you to hear some other interviews and stuff going on.
Yes, I guess I can say I'm an environmentalist, but I work for a marine science.
You came here tonight, were you satisfied with the outcome of this meeting?
Well, I mean, you get what you come here for. This is a predominantly fishing community, and I did hear what I wanted to hear. There are definitely some persons who are interested in making sure that their natural resources are protected and that we have resources for future generations.
So you were satisfied with the information received?
Um, I suppose he definitely could have given us a little bit more information on mitigation efforts. He kept throwing out those point ones, but didn't exactly say what mitigation efforts are they planning to have, what preventative measures they're going to take. They didn't say how many environmental officers they plan on having in staff. They didn't really pinpoint exactly where they are going to have this location, they said, this Stad Oil Site. However, there are a considerable amount of mangroves in that area as well as its proximity to the Bahamas, sorry, to the Makayan National Park, which feeds this community.
What do you think about Mr. Junior's statement that they would move forward or mitigate whatever is found with this EIA?
Well, all I want to know is, or I guess all I'm really looking forward to is the publication of this EIA that is published in a space where everyone can access it, not just people who know where to go and get it from. It needs to be put in a public space, especially so that the people of East End and Grand Bahama can read it and, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Especially about the environment for the residents and the Bahamians, to know all too well the impact that it could be causing with Arco in the industrial park. And to board all that here, despite all the barriers, and so, uh, things that they want to put in place, the mitigation, whether or not it's not environmentally conducive for this area, they're going to put more mitigations in place. But residents are saying this is something that we want to avoid.
There are some, there are some undesires, everyone's against it, again, I mean, some of the new technology. There are steps that we have to make on that. We're talking about the EIA, the government EMP, which is the National Management Plan, which has such time, I signed my check, but I will not do that. So I have a background in research too. I likewise go and do my research and ask hard questions, if they do alright. If I have concerns, look at my item, I will make concerns to the court firm, and I expect those who are in a position to answer, or will answer them, and answer them honestly.
And ultimately, for the persons in this area, it's a matter of trust. They're questioning now, can we trust the man who allowed his non-executive chairman to essentially commit fraud in our country? Come back, fire the man, the man resigned, and come back. And people are looking at this very skeptical, and saying, you know, is this some, is this an investor that we can trust?
You are saying that the man, they sound like a lot of speculation. I'm not here to speculate on the speculation. I will wait for the...
From the outside, from the outside.
Yeah, from the outside. And again, like I said, I'm putting myself over the political arena, I'm looking at the outside. I will wait for the information to come, and then I will respond accordingly. So all, also, all the concerns are being documented. I am not here to answer all the questions, I don't wait for the company. Again, I, like I said, I'm the researcher also, and whenever a question I ask, I will ask.
As an East Stander, do you trust this partner?
Of course, I, I, I'm being very objective right now.
Do you trust the investors?
There is, there is a Member Parliament from East End, Grand Bahama, on the floor, who said, I'm undecided, I'm waiting for more information. I put myself in the same position. Based on what I've found so far, I am not, I am not raising any major red flag at the moment. I'm waiting for more information myself, again, as an East Stander, before I make any negative, all right, right now I'm being open, I'm being objective.
Here be should jobs...
What I've seen so far, I am okay.
Should jobs, uh, shadow, or should jobs be at the forefront, regardless of whatever else happens? Should jobs at the end of the day be at the forefront?
The question is, should jobs at the forefront?
Are they at the forefront?
Is that, is that, is that the real question? Because, because they are questioning talking about jobs, and they are questioning, as I can say, I'm talking about careers. Okay, so let's not narrow down to jobs only.
Work, work, because we're hearing from people, we need to work.
No, 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 work.
And I know the difference between a job and a career, I do.
But, okay, and I, and I respect that. Now, as I understood, one of the questions also spoke to, um, in trouble also. Okay, we spin out. So of course, they're proposing to start businesses and to create spinoffs, cover largely down the road, way down the road. So it's going to be more than just that. We're supposed to find a way now to start their own business. Ask an out from this project that can carry on to generations to come. But anyway, thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Hey, Aaron, tell me something, Aaron. Look at Louis. KC, man. Yeah, I get you, I can, tell me something. Can you think of another country?
Camera, my idol.
Where you want with it?
No, 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 why you talking to the camera? You want to cut it off?
But you just talk with the camera.
No, why?
Cut it off. Hey, hey, come on, hey, did I say, this man, look at him. Huh? Huh? Did I insult him? Did I attack him? That's the arrogance of incompetence. What, huh? I'm in the public domain, this is a public, this is a public officer, man. This man want to attack me, attack my camera? Come on, man, hey, you see this? You have a question? You can't answer the question, or you want a softball question?
You know I was pulling for you, bro. It's KC, man, you know I was pulling for you. I always pull it for you, baby, you know that. You know I always pull it for you. You and I have a conversation, right? And you said you want the camera.
What you got to do? And I'm talking about, you know, you can trust me though.
I don't have a problem with that, KC. But then I don't want anybody to hold up on me while I'm talking to you, okay? So respect me.
Officer, please, don't let me report you now, I know my rights. This ain't no voice now. This ain't no, I know my rights. This is the one, this is the one. And I got Anthony number in my phone if you need it.
And then the camera, it's talking. But at the same time, it's probably, it's probably, but no, no, but guess what?
You know I've been attacking your government, but I never attacked you. See the officer, he took the camera right behind him.
You know I got confidence in you. I ever told you, you know that, right? One thing, I'm not going to stand for.
I still depending on you, man.
I get you, but listen to me.
Anthony Ferguson, I want you to see this. Officers, you know you and I talk. Mr. Greensley, you know and I, you and I talk. I have a respect for the police officers, and I'm your biggest advocate. You need to train some of your officers.
You know, fantasy, and a lot of fantasy, but it's not, wait, wait, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you. But I'm telling you one thing, I am not going to do it.
We're not talking about...
No, I'm, of course, of course. Drive safe, man, drive safe.
Turan, you ready?
Yeah.
Walk in.
All right, the other, the interview is going to have an interview with some other reporters. All time and done.
You're going to lock me up? It's like a sleep, man. It's cold and tight, eh?
Mommy, can you ride off? I can give you a ride off.
I addicted to these frigging social media. Lock me up, man.
Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, we'll finish conversation in the, in the future. Thank you so much for joining in.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.